Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. We recognize the quorum of our Licensing Board present tonight with myself, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes from the Licensing Board meeting held on February 17th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Our only item of business besides our minutes tonight is an amusement device license application. That was in your packet. Any comments, questions, discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Our Licensing Board is adjourned.
Good evening. I would like to call to order the Board of Public Works. We have five items on the agenda. Item number one would be approval of minutes from regular meeting March 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen and Alderman Seizer. Any corrections, deletions? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Lady Breath Garden Parking Stalls, permission to bid.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Alderman Zingshaim. Okay, Alderman Allen. Any questions? Jake, do you have any?
Mike was here. He just stepped out. This has been in discussion for a long time. It's included in our budget for 2025 to move forward with this.
Okay, all right. There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number three, Award Contract 2501, Kilborn Avenue and Third Avenue Reconstruction. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. This item is for the award of Contract 2501 for the reconstruction of Kilborn Avenue from Main Street to Indiana Avenue and for Third Avenue, the reconstruction of Third Avenue from Sycamore Street to Kilborn Avenue. We will upgrade underground utilities, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, remove and replace curb and gutter, sidewalk repairs, and install new asphalt and restore disturbed areas. This contract will also include replacement of public lead water laterals within the road right of way and replacement of privately laterals outside of the right of way under an agreement that the city has with Washington County for the funding of this lateral work. Bids, we received two bids for this contract, and they are listed in your memo. The cost of the project will be covered using previously budgeted funds from the capital budget in engineering, sewer utility, water utility, and the use of OPA funding that the city had received. We'll also get funding from Wisconsin DOT in their local road improvement program, and then that's for the Kilborn Avenue portion. And then, as I mentioned, we will receive reimbursement from Washington County for the replacement of the laterals. We reviewed the bids and the qualifications of Dorner with the low bidder, and based on work previously done under contract for the city, we find that the Dorner is capable of doing this work, so we would recommend that Contract 2501 be awarded to Dorner in the amount of $4,527,980.22 as listed in their bid, and also a contingency fund of about 5.68% for a total allocation not to exceed $4,785,000 for the construction of this project.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, second. Alderman Schmidt. Any questions for Max? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number four, Award Contract 2503, Edgewood Lane Reconstruction. Max?
Thank you again. As you announced, this is for the reconstruction of Edgewood Lane between Wisconsin and Indiana. Same thing as Kilborn, where we will improve underground utilities, curb and gutter. So we will replace the entire sidewalk along the project and install new asphalt pavement and restore disturbed area. That project also includes replacement of lead laterals under the same contract with the county, so the city will get reimbursement for these costs once the contract is completed. We received three bids for this contract, and Dorner was, again, the low bidder, and then we would recommend that the contract be awarded to them for the amount listed in their bid of $1,480,961.56 and an allocation of about 5.67% of the bid, I mean, a contingency fund, and for an allocation not to exceed $1,565,000 for the project.
Motion on the floor?
Yeah, motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, Alderman Sparts. Any questions for Max? Alderman, per question.
Max, is this going to be on the same scenario that we had with other contractors that have taken on multiple projects? That there will be a timing phase to this, like one project first, then the next? Or, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes. So, we've met with Dorner last week already after we opened the bid, because we expected a bigger contractor to get the Kilborn and Third contract, and somebody else maybe to get Edgewood. And the first contract is a long one, and so we were a little concerned with the schedule. So, we met with Todd Dorner. He had his schedule figured out, and we sat down and looked at it with him. We have a pre-construction meeting next week, where we'll have all the players, the utilities, et cetera, Public Works. Pretty much, he wants to start on the work early April. He will start with Kilborn and Third, and he's going to have multiple crews, first of all, on the project, and then, once the underground crews are done with the first project, they will move to Edgewood beginning of July, second week of July, and then he will have other crews to do the grading, the concrete, et cetera. So, he has enough crews to do this job, to do both jobs, and then it will be until the end of October, and then both projects will be completed by the end of October.
Thank you.
The proximity of these two projects are pretty close, which probably makes it simpler.
Yeah, we combined Third and Kilborn, because at that intersection, we have a lot of storm sewer that's common to both reconstruction, and it was easier for connecting all the utilities, the water, the sanitary, the storm sewer. And then, yes, Edgewood is not that far.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number five, Agreement for Improvement Within Existing Easements, 527 Hargrove Street. Max?
Thank you again. This is a request that came from the property owner at 527 Hargrove Street to install a fence on their property for the purpose of privacy and controlling pets on their property. So, the easement, the fence is going to go through a sanitary sewer easement. We reviewed the specifications for the fence that is proposed. We reviewed how it's going to fit into the easement, along with sewer utility. We found that, using an agreement that we used previously for storm sewer easement, we're satisfied that all the rights and responsibilities between the property owners and the city to maintain the fence, to remove it if the city needs to repair the sanitary sewer, et cetera, and not damage any existing utilities while installing the fence, all of that is in the agreement that we're putting in front of you tonight, and we're recommending the approval of the agreement so that they can install their fence.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, and a second?
Second.
Alderman Sparts or Alderman Schmidt? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Max? Yes, Alderman Sternig.
Max, is this kind of a standard operating procedure as relates to these types of easements and allowing property owners to build, whether it be fences or placing sheds or other, call them semi-permanent types of structures on an easement area versus contained within their property off the easement?
So, typically, we would not allow any permanent items in easements that we have for sanitary sewer, storm sewer, water main, et cetera. We have been allowing fences in some storm sewer easements. They always submit to us when they want to install something in the easement. Sometimes it is possible, sometimes it is not. With storm sewer, for example, if it's just a pipe going through the easement, and the item can be easily removed for any maintenance or repairs and put back, then we usually go through this process. Sometimes it's not possible, because we would have a swell in the easement, and we don't want anything that would block the flow of storm water. So, sometimes we have to say no. This is the first one that I'm doing for sanitary sewer easement, and so that's why I'm looked in the sewer utility. So, this is something that we've done in the past for storm pipes. This is the first time I'm doing it for sanitary. But, yeah, it's not unusual.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Max.
Thank you.
Seeing no business before the Board of Public Works, adjourned as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. We have three agenda items on the agenda this evening. The first one is the approval of minutes from our Finance Committee regular meeting, March 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Seizer. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions, corrections? There being none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item is Resolution Number 79, authorizing the sale and the appropriation of funds of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department surplus equipment. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening. This evening, our department is requesting to transfer funds from the sale of a pickup truck at auction to an expenditure account to help cover the cost of a new lawnmower. This lawnmower was part of our 2025 CIP budget. As you know, we go through the budget last year, you know, June, July, August. It gets approved in October. We always try to keep our budget, our costs, accurate. We don't put any fluff, any extra things like that, and we try and keep them as tight as we can and accurate as we can so we make room for other purchases and other projects. Well, lo and behold, come January of this year, our supplier added a 2% to the quotes they gave us last year. So, when we went out for bid this early, late winter, early spring, the budgets, the cost came in a little higher than what we had budgeted. So, we purchased a new pickup truck last year. We sold the pickup truck at auction. We would like to allocate those funds from the sale of that pickup truck at auction towards the purchase of a new piece of equipment. That way, we don't have to go back to the capital budget, try and find additional funds, or try and carry money over till 2026 or something like that. So, this evening, we are requesting to transfer those funds from the sale of that piece, auction sale of that truck to help offset the cost of this new piece of equipment. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, Resolution Number 80, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed $4.325 million general obligation promissory notes, Series 2025A. We've got John Cameron from Aylers with us this evening. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here this evening. I'm going to walk through the pre-sale report that is in your packet and talk about the highlights of the upcoming debt issuance. As it was stated, this is for not to exceed $4,325,000 of general obligation promissory notes. This is Series 2025A, the purpose of which is to finance your 2025 capital improvement projects. The projects are listed in greater detail on Table 2 of the enclosed pre-sale packet, as well as for Tax Increment District Number 16, project-related costs, specifically design-related expenses for the upcoming Indiana Avenue project, including water and sanitary sewer design work, and the debt service for that related project will be paid for with revenues from Tax Increment District Number 16. In terms of the authority, the debt is being issued as a promissory note. It is using the city's general obligation debt capacity. After the issuance of these notes, it's anticipated that the city will be at approximately 22% of its overall debt limit. All municipalities have a finite amount of general obligation borrowing capacity, and that is limited to no more than 5% of your total equalized value. So, the city is at a very healthy level of indebtedness at only 22% with a good amount of capacity going into the future. The notes are being issued for a term of 10 years. The principal will start April 1st, 2027, and will be due annually every April out through 2035. Interest will be due every six months, starting April 1st, 2026. There will be a prepayment or a call feature on these notes anytime on or after April 1st, 2032, so you'd have the ability to refinance them for interest savings if the interest rates at that particular time are lower than the interest rates that are locked in on the day of sale. You'd also have the opportunity to refund them for structure if you so chose to stretch them out longer than 10 years. In terms of the process, we will be seeking a rating with Standard and Poor's or S&amp;P. The city is currently at a double A rating, which is an extremely high credit rating. We'll be going through that process here in early April. In terms of the method of sale, the proposed method of sale is a competitive sale out in the open market. This is really the past practice of the city. The projects that are being financed are routine capital improvement projects, which lend themselves very well to a competitive sale, where we, much like a construction process, you have a proposed or set bid date and time. Underwriters have until that time period to submit their bids to us. We will tabulate those bids and determine the winning underwriter, and then go through the finalization sale process per the terms of the Parameters Resolution that I'll talk about here in a second. In terms of the Parameters Resolution that you have on the agenda tonight, it really is approving the sale to move forward on a date other than a regular Common Council meeting date, which is very common in the spring months, to put it on a date where we know that there's not as much sales. Most municipalities meet on Monday and Tuesday nights in the state of Wisconsin, so if we can move off a known meeting night where we know where there's going to be a lot of other sales competing in the marketplace, it's to your advantage to do that. The proposed sale date is Wednesday, April 16th, so it lines up well with a date that we know there's not as much paper out in the market. We've got a maximum issuance size at $4,325,000. We'll take bids up to 108% of that. Does not change the power amount. It really just allows for a premium by the underwriter to help potentially pay for the first few years' cost of interest expense related to the notes. A maximum true interest cost, or TIC, of 5%. Right now, the amateurization schedule that's in the pre-sale report contemplates a TIC of 3.57%, so it's quite a high maximum. But, again, it's a maximum parameter that if, as long as we come in under that, it would allow the sale to occur. And then, no more than $200,000 of movement between each maturity. There's always some adjustments on the day of sale, usually downward, again, because it's a not-to-exceed amount, so it just allows us some flexibility if we need to move money between maturities to keep the structure intact that we plan for in terms of the pre-sale estimate. Jumping to the timeline, there's a number of steps that take place between now and April 16th, which would be the date of sale. There's a preliminary official statement, which is the primary offering document for the sale of the notes, and there's a lot of information that gets gathered between city staff and us at Aylers. We are the ones that put together the official statement on your behalf. There is the rating call with S&amp;P that is scheduled for April 2nd. We'll be getting the official statement out into the marketplace thereon after the week of April 7th, and then the sale would occur on April 16th, and the estimated closing date, that would be the date that funds would be available, would be on or around May 7th. The schedules that are included in the pre-sale packet just outline the existing debt that is outstanding within the city, the projects to be financed, and then the proposed amateurization schedule for the notes. So, on the day of sale, the underwriters will be bidding really on the overall price of the notes, as well as an interest rate by each maturity. So, on the day of sale, the interest rates and the payment structure will be locked for the life of the notes. So, those two items together will be tabulated to determine who the winning underwriter is. This schedule will be updated, hopefully for the better, in terms of lower cost of interest than what we show here. This is an estimate based on current market conditions with some additional movement for interest rate movement between now and the day of sale. The very last page of the pre-sale reports shows a one-year trend in municipal bond rates. Bond rates have been holding fairly steady. We've seen some uptick over the last week or so in interest rates by about 10 basis points or 0.1%, but overall, things have been fairly steady within the bond market. With that, happy to turn it back over and answer any questions.
I had several questions, but you answered most of them. I do have one, though, that I want to address. Reading the resolution, Section 11 mentions that these are going to be issued in certificate form and in $5,000 increments, but then Section 13 talks about registration and transfer, so ownership can be transferred, canceling certificates, reissuing. But then, Section 15 mentions Depository Trust Company, DTC, and book entry. Are these normally book entry, or are they actually physical certificates?
They're normally book entry, and all payments get made to deposit, in the United States, all bond payments, note payments, get made to Depository Trust Company or DTC.
Okay. And then, do these bonds, and this is kind of a general question, but are these ever available on the open market for individual investors? Or where do they, who usually are the buyers? Are they mutual fund companies or?
Typically, yes. So, what you'll see on the day of sale is actually the syndicate that is in on the transaction. So, there'll be a lead underwriting firm. So, for example, Robert W. Baird is the largest underwriter in the state of Wisconsin. But oftentimes, when they're bidding, they're bidding with what's called a syndicate, and those might be other underwriters. It might be banks, and then they're parsed off in the secondary market. So, oftentimes, mutual funds are the primary purchaser of those notes out in the secondary market, but potentially, individual investors could be purchasing them as well.
Could be blocks that come available. Okay. And just one small question. If interest is paid every six months, why is the first one April of '26? Why not October of '25?
Good question. So, with general obligation debt, because you've already established your property tax levy for the year, you've got to establish it based on the debt that is outstanding at the time the levy is set. So, because we're doing the sale in the following year from when the levy was set, you don't know what that interest payment would be in October. Therefore, you've got to, it's customary to move that interest payment to the following year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Good questions. Any other questions from the council? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Seizer. Any additional questions or comments? There being none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, John.
With there being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It is March 17th, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Clerk, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, it has been.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is approval of our Common Council regular meeting minutes for March 3rd, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Butchlick. Any questions, discussion, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I'd like to take up item number 20 as our first item of business tonight, and unfortunately, to the crowd, this is a closed session. I don't anticipate it taking very long, so I would ask for your patience while we do this. We have an item that may be appropriate for closed session tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.851G, which is conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This is regarding a Walgreens tax assessment case and some other general updates on other tax assessment claims.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Sternig. I will call the roll. Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now in closed session. We'll go upstairs, and again, we'll be as quick as we can, and then we will reconvene in open session. All right. We are now reconvened in open session. I'm going to ask Ian to read a suggested motion for us.
So, the motion will be to approve the settlement agreement for the Walmart tax, sorry, Walgreens tax cases for the properties located at 1720 West Washington and 1921 South Main Street, and to approve the refunds based on those settlement agreements.
So moved.
We'll give that to Alderman Sternig. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? I will call the roll. Alderman Schmidt.
Aye.
Alderman Sparts.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Berquist.
Aye.
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderwoman Seizer.
Aye.
Alderman Sternig.
Aye.
And Alderman Zingshaim.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We are back to our presentations tonight, and to keep things out of order, I'm going to start with number two, which is our Police Department Citizen Appreciation Awards. Chief?
Thank you. I appreciate you giving us the time, one, to present to the council and you, Mr. Mayor, but also somewhat more importantly, to the community that's watching. We know that the most effective crime reduction, crime prevention tool or weapon against crime is a community that's engaged in its own safety. I've talked to you many times about how fortunate we are in West Bend to have a community that deeply believes in public safety as a means to assure the quality of life that we enjoy here. Throughout the year, tonight, we're going to talk about some very specific citizens, but throughout the year, I can't tell you how proud I am to police with our community. Throughout the year, they are always engaged, citizens that are looking out for their neighbors, citizens that are making sure that things are right, and if not, they see something and say something, a line we hear very often and is engaged by the community. 200 years ago, Sir Robert Peel talked about the foundations of policing. He talked about the police are the people and the people are the police. And the best possible outcome you could have is where the citizens themselves were a volunteer force, a volunteer force engaged in safety. We're going to recognize after our citizens, our true volunteer force, but really, I think our entire community really makes that mark and hits that definition. Much like you, as outlined in the Declaration of Independence, the power and authority to govern is from the consent of the governed. The power and authority to police is from exactly that same group, the citizens. Giving us that power to police, I've said many times, we don't police West Bend, we police with West Bend. So, tonight, we would like to take an opportunity to recognize some very specific citizens with that huge asterisk that this is just the tip of the iceberg. There's been many, many more citizens involved and engaged in their own safety and our safety here in the communities. With that, I'll ask Captain Rollinger to step forward, and as you hear your name, come join the mayor and I here on the side.
Good evening. Can I have Deborah Ronsky step forward, please?
On Sunday, August 18th, 2024, Deborah observed a male driver slumped over in a running parked vehicle in the 200 block of North University Drive. Concerned for the man's welfare, she stopped to check on the man and found him to be incapacitated by alcohol. Deborah turned off the vehicle, removed the keys from the ignition, and contacted police. Deborah waited until police arrived to ensure the man did not drive any further or leave the scene. The man was ultimately arrested for The man was ultimately arrested for operating while impaired, second offense. Deborah's willingness to get involved in quick thinking prevented an intoxicated driver from endangering the safety of our roads and our citizens. Well done.
Thank you.
Noah Erdel is not here, but he gave us permission to talk about his story, I don't think. Noah didn't sneak in, did he? Okay. On Saturday, October 19, 2024, at approximately 5:15 a.m., Noah was awakened by an orange glow coming from outside his apartment complex in the 1500 block of Creek Road. Noah got out of bed to investigate it, to investigate, and discovered a neighboring
balcony in the complex was engulfed in flames. Noah immediately called 911 to report the fire. While he was providing the information to the dispatcher, Noah ran outside and across the complex grounds to the burning building and began notifying other residents and instructing them to evacuate. Noah's decisive action ensured all the residents safely exited the building. His quick thinking prevented injuries and allowed first responders to extinguish the fire before it spread further through the complex. Thank you, Noah. Martina de la Luna, she was here, but unfortunately, she had to get going, but she did give us permission to talk. On Saturday, March 1, 2025, Martina de la Luna was walking her dog in the 1700 block of Stonebridge Road when she noticed a vehicle parked on the side of the road that seemed out of place. Martina detected an order, a strong order of drugs coming from the car and contacted the police department to report her observations. Martina provided crucial information, which allowed the responding officers to locate the car and make contact with the driver. During their investigation, officers were able to determine the individual was using drugs in the vehicle, seized a significant amount of drugs packaged for sale, and took the subject into custody for an out-of-state homicide-related warrant. Martina's willingness to get involved led drugs, led to drugs being taken off the street and a dangerous individual being taken into custody. Again, well done, Martina. And now, a group of citizens who reported intoxicated drivers. Thomas Schmidt, Christopher Walter, please step forward when your name is called, Kurt Gall, Jeffrey Schall, Emily Pupick, Jay Schwach, Robin McGath, Gregory Schimmel, Roger Klein, Christian Schmidt, and John Stephan. As we muster up our army here. These citizens, oh, still working. These citizens observed impaired drivers threatening the safety of West Bend's roads and took action by contacting the police department, embracing the See Something, Say Something initiative. Their reports enabled the police to locate and stop these vehicles and remove an intoxicated or drug-impaired driver from our roads. Their actions and willingness to get involved remove impaired drivers from the roadways and help prevent vehicle crashes, serious injuries, and potential fatalities. Thank you all for everything you've done.
So none of these faces should be the first time, you shouldn't be seeing these faces the first time tonight. I know none of you are. Most of our, well, Matt, I'm sorry, could you take the camera so Advisor McAndrews can get in the picture?
Absolutely.
So you've seen this wonderful group of West Bend Police Department volunteers at just about every single special event in town. Seen them at our parades, helping us to keep our roads safe, our community able to enjoy the parades in the time that is now, 2025, where certainly a lot more resources are needed to keep a safe event. You see them at Music on Main, a friendly face welcoming you to the event, and then a maybe more stern face, making sure you're not leaving with a beer, so appreciate that. But really, just a great community member. You might even see them camped out, guarding the flowers for the annual sale across the street. Just everything we ask for them to do, they do. Last year, over almost 900 hours of volunteer service from this group. I can't, we've always been very, very proud of this group, and we continue to think of you not as, it's great that you're here on Citizen Appreciation Night, but you truly are part of our team. We're glad to have you. So if I mention your name, or when I mention your name, please step forward. Last year, and I'll give you their name, and then the hours that they donated last year or volunteered. Brian Metz, 95 hours. John Fitzgerald, 95 hours. Dean Kelly, 89 hours. Gordy Cleaver, 74 hours. James Yurkovic, 68 hours. Janet Ayers, 63. Steve Ranky, 61 hours. Jeff Clark, 49 hours. James Ranky, 48 hours. Bear with me. Mike Wellner, 43 hours. Ruth Ann Ewer, 37 hours. Tom Islandfeld, 34 hours. Adam Schrader, 33 hours. Emily Pupick, 31 hours. Alex Aaron, 24 hours. Milo Lazarvic, 15 hours. Chandler Fisher was new to our group and has been deployed, and a brand-new member just joined recently, Elizabeth Blank. Every one of you, thank you very much for what you do for the work. Thank you all. Would Fire Lieutenant Daniel McCrory, please, come forward? You look good. I have a Resolution Number 81 honoring Fire Lieutenant Daniel McCrory for 25 years of service. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderwoman Sizer. Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas Daniel McCrory attended Wisconsin Technical College receiving a firefighter certificate and completed a two-year program at M A T C for Fire Emergency Medical Technician, worked for Fredonia Fire and Rescue for six years, and Northern Ozaki Ambulance for five years. He began his service for the West Bend Fire Department in March of 2000 as a firefighter. In 2014, he became a motor pump operator and was promoted to lieutenant in 2015. He is also a member of the International Association of Firefighters. And whereas during his career as a motor pump operator, Daniel McCrory was named American Legion Firefighter of the Year in 2023. And therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant Daniel McCrory and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Could Motor Pump Operator Mark Rensel, please, step forward? I have a Resolution Number 82 honoring Fire Motor Pump Operator Mark Rensel for 25 years of service.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Sparts. Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas Mark Rensel has been a great asset to the fire department throughout his 25-year career with the City of West Bend. He was hired as a full-time employee on March 20, 2000, as a firefighter, and his experience grew in the department promoting him to Motor Pump Operator in 2022. He is also a member of the International Association of Firefighters. And whereas Mark Rensel was named American Legion Emergency Medical Technician of the Year in 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Motor Pump Operator Mark Rensel and expresses deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal and dedicated service. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Could City Administrator Jay Chambeau, please, step up to the podium? I knew you'd enjoy that. He's not going to do it. I have Resolution Number 83 honoring City Administrator Jay Chambeau. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, please, second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Whereas Jay Chambeau was appointed as city administrator on August 22, 2016, and has served the City of West Bend with dedication, innovation, and integrity for eight and a half years. And whereas Chambeau firmly believes that relationships matter and was intentional in creating genuine connections with the business community, elected officials, state agencies, developers, city employees, and residents, which played a key role in securing grant awards, recruiting businesses, and ensuring successful day-to-day operations. And whereas Chambeau was a strong advocate for intentional communication and was instrumental in the creation of the Communications Department, propelling the City of West Bend forward to become the most followed municipality on social media in the state. And whereas Chambeau championed numerous transformative initiatives during his tenure, most notably leading the revitalization of the Downtown Riverwalk and the reconstruction of historic Main Street, both of which will have a lasting positive impact by strengthening the downtown business community, attracting new investments, and enhancing outdoor recreation opportunities. Whereas Chambeau spearheaded significant strides in economic development, including the creation of four tax increment finance districts, recruitment of Milwaukee Tool, relocation of Kennel Marine metal products, revitalization of the Regner Park Beach House, and the addition of more than 700 residential units, which collectively strengthened the city's economy and community offerings. And whereas Chambeau's leadership on the Tourism Commission as chairman included the efforts of Visit West Bend and the implementation of grant programs that successfully supported numerous organizations and events that positioned the city as a vibrant Four Seasons destination, welcoming visitors from across the nation. And whereas Chambeau was dedicated to supporting staff and enhancing internal city operations, and he prioritized the implementation of the compensation study, PTO policy, and improved insurance benefits. And whereas Chambeau demonstrated a genuine commitment to service by actively serving on numerous boards, including the Boys and Girls Club of Washington County, United Way of Washington County, Sunrise Rotary, League of Wisconsin Municipalities, and generously volunteered his time to organizations, specifically the Bend in Downtown West Bend Association. And whereas Chambeau's distinguished service has been recognized at the international level as a recipient of the prestigious ICMA 30 Years of Service Award and the ICMA Credential Manager designation, and the WCA Meritorious Service Award, reflecting his enduring commitment to excellence in public service and leadership in local government. And whereas Jay Chambeau's hard work, dedication, and vision have made an incredibly positive and lasting impact on the City of West Bend. Now therefore, be it resolved, the City of West Bend Common Council hereby recognizes, thanks, and honors Jay Chambeau for his outstanding service, leadership, and unwavering commitment to the City of West Bend. Be it further resolved that the City of West Bend extends its heartfelt gratitude to Jay Chambeau for his eight and a half years of exemplary service and wishes him continued success in all future endeavors. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to say a few words?
Sure. I'll say thank you. Max was getting a 25-year award a few meetings ago, and the mayor asked him to say a few words, and he stood up to the mic and said, "Thank you," and then promptly sat down. I'll give a little more than that, but I want to start with thank you. I really appreciate this, all the kind words and the opportunity to serve the City of West Bend. It's been a true honor to do so for eight and a half years. John, as the longest-standing alderman, mayor, and alderman, I've served for several mayors and lots of aldermen over the last eight and a half years. John was here when I was hired eight and a half years ago. Thanks, John, for your continued support, and to all of the aldermen and Mayor Ongart and all the other mayors that I served under. The entire staff and department head team, but more importantly, the, all of the staff, and many of you are here tonight and have been here over the years. The City of West Bend is in a service industry. What we do is provide service for all of our constituents and visitors, and you heard about some of the occurrences that have happened over the last eight and a half years because of all of you and your hard work and dedication. We have a great department head team. We have great employees within the City of West Bend, and I'll still be around and excited to be a resident of the City of West Bend moving forward and look forward to seeing all the great work that continues here in West Bend. So I'll start with thank you and end with thank you. Appreciate it.
West Bend is in a great place because of your innovation and communication and leadership, and you've done amazing, amazing things. You've been a great leader to me and the council and all of our staff, and so we are very, very thankful and look forward to, again, your continued success. All right, we're going to move on to our consent agenda tonight. Items 6 through 12 listed on your agenda, we're just taking up in committees prior to this meeting. I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Zingshaim and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll move on to our reports tonight. We're going to start with our Parks and Recreation Report.
All right, thank you. Park and Rec Commission meeting was February 27. Ryan Schmidt reviewed the aquapark policy and the procedures for the summer, including ticket prices, weather-related issues, discounts for group purchases, and other issues. Input and questions were welcome, and there were some suggestions, so he took those and will make those changes. Skate park review. Nearly 50 guests were in attendance, and about a dozen shared their comments and questions regarding the potential location, the size, the design, and the funding. All questions were addressed. Participants and guests were encouraged to become involved with the plans and the design by joining the Friends of West Bend Skate Park Group. Most positive feedback was, mostly positive feedback was received, and it was great to see so much enthusiasm. After hearing community input and consideration of other possible locations, it was moved and seconded to approve Regner Park Sport Court area as a future home of the new skate park. Rick Fox introduced the New Urban Forestry Master Plan Working Document, which is meant to replace the previous plan from 1995. Many things have changed since '95, and we need guidance for the city's urban forestry policy, administration, and management. This includes tree inventory, the Free Street Program, education, and management practices. The commission approved an application for a grant to develop the new master plan. A couple requested the presence of their dog as part of their wedding ceremony at Lac Lorraine in October. Dogs are generally not permitted in the parks. However, the Friends of Lac Lorraine approved an exception to the rule for this situation only, and the commission voted to approve it as well. The exception will The exception will apply only to the dog's attendance at the actual ceremony. Shorewood High School requested an overnight campout in June at Lac Lloran. This would be a starting, a stopping point in their annual canoe trip down the river. This has been done in the past, and it was approved again for this year. There were additional reports from department heads that included a report on a successful snowshoe event in February. There's progress on renovations at the White Family Cabin at Ridge Run Park. Nature Playground progress. There is progress in both preparing the outdoor location and working indoors to build the structures that will go into the playground this spring. There was a successful season for the ice rink at Regner this year. It was the longest ice season in many years. Lifeguard staff for the upcoming season is being contacted for availability and planning. Street trees are being pruned, and trees are being removed as necessary for the upcoming street reconstruction. It's a very busy department, who's a busy meeting, lots of projects in the work, and they can be commended for the great job they do.
Great, thank you, Mayor Beth. How about our Library Board Report?
Thank you, sir. The last meeting of the Library Board was held on February eighteenth. We opened the meeting, as is our practice, with the call to order, pledge of allegiance, and approval of the consent agenda. Financial reports were given, which included a donation from the Library Friends Group in the amount of eighteen thousand and eighty-five dollars for upgrading of some AV, audiovisual equipment, and two hundred and fifty dollars from William and Sarah Alderson for programming. Thank you very much to them. Next, as part of the Library Director's Report, we were introduced to Amber, the Communications Manager. She gave us a presentation concerning her position and her duties, which includes the library's social media presence. She shared the, or let's see, which includes our Facebook page being a large part of that outreach. She shared the two thousand and twenty-five social media plans, which fall under a new mantra called "community-driven and reader-focused." You'll see, you'll still see a schedule of events posted, but as Jeff Bezos once said, and it was in a slide of hers, "If you build a great experience, customers will tell each other about it. Word of mouth is very powerful." Amber's slide kept that same thought going, is, "We provide amazing programming here at the West Bend Library. Let's let our work and success speak for itself." So you'll see an emphasis on people rather than events. Staff highlights will be a large part of that emphasis, but you'll also see volunteer and donor highlights, along with patron interactions, which will be, which have been very popular, along with community highlights. People, not events. Check out the library's Facebook page and see what I'm talking about. Steve, the Library Director, also briefed us on some software products that we use at the library or are thinking about subscribing to. That is the Leap and Vega products. These software products help with categorizing, cataloging, library assets, along with programming and promotional functions. These products may help us save money over other products that are out there, as they have been recognized by the Monarch Library System, which we are a member of. The agenda item for discussion was our annual report to the state. It was reviewed and approved by the board. Items of note were, number one, we've added more materials to the library this year while staying on budget. Number two is that we are doing more adult programming than youth programs, although the numbers are still real high in both, and that there are actually more city users than county users at the library, which can kind of result in a shift in funding, because, you know, the county does provide funds for county residents that use our library. The next meeting of the board is scheduled for March eighteenth, tomorrow. So anybody have any questions?
Good, thanks Brett.
Thank you.
How about our Plan Commission Meeting? John?
Plan Commission met on March fourth. Unfortunately, I had to do it remotely, or fortunately, I was able to do it remotely. It was really nice. We had two items for our agenda. The first was approval of two certified lots on the Certified Survey Map on nine hundred feet east of Meadowlark Court on North Side of Washington Street. That's by the West Bend Sand and Stone. It's the field across from Highway Z, where Highway Z comes into thirty-three. That was approved, and we had site plan approval request for the Seven Brew Coffee Shop located on a vacant parcel south of sixteen oh six, sixteen oh eight, South Main Street by Brixmore Paradise Pavilion. That was where the old Foot Doctor's office used to be. So those were approved, and that was the agenda. It was a quick one.
Great.
April won't be so short.
Thank you, John. How about our Bid Facade Grant, or excuse me, the Bid Board and Bid Facade Grant Committee?
Correct. Two meetings. Bid Board met. We had our normal approval of minutes and the financial report. We then moved into an introduction of the District Two Alderman Candidates. These are the candidates for my spot in District Two. Brett Engelking and Mike Hartwell introduced themselves and provided information on why they're running for District Two Alderman, as well as offered to answer questions. We then moved into a discussion of loading zones and parking spaces within downtown. There were some misconceptions on how some of the parking stalls worked and sound. So Matt came in and explained the state law, that you can't put a parking spot where it's gonna back into a
Crosswalk.
Crosswalk, or anything of that nature. That went real well. Then we awarded a contract to Bemis Upland Spring Floral for our two thousand and twenty-five hanging baskets. We discussed the, discussed and got a report on the downtown maintenance plan from John Fellows, who will soon be, who is currently the, although it wasn't announced at this meeting, because we didn't get final okay until, like, just after we adjourned. But John Fellows, our Community Development Director, will be serving as the Executive Director of the Business Improvement District on a go-forward basis. Then we received a, we approved an expenditure of fourteen hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents to Roots and Branches to support their efforts to beautify downtown and some of the beds that are actually located in the ground as opposed to planters. And then we discussed our upcoming meeting schedule. There was a proposal to meet bimonthly. After some discussion, we agreed that we would retain the existing meeting schedule with the ability to cancel meetings where there was not a sufficient amount of work or no work in some cases at a given meeting. And let's see, we accepted the resignation of Krista Barnes and discussed the transition plan, and this is the point at which John became unofficially our director on an acting basis, and then after the meeting, that happened officially. We then received Downtown West Bend Association and Bend Updates on activities and so on. We're looking forward to the block party that'll sort of kick off the outdoor summer-type events for the city. And then we provide, provided an update on the facade grant program. This was the, this covered the grant to Big Brothers Big Sisters Association for improvements to the rear and side of their building. We also announced that we would be having an additional meeting on March eleventh to review the final two applications and grant funding. We, I'm gonna then, if there are no questions on the bid, I'll just do the Bid Facade Grant and then take all questions. We had our follow-up facade grant meeting on the Tuesday, the eleventh of March. We awarded half of our remaining funds, seventy-five hundred dollars, to the, it's the Old Shots Property. Give me just a second, I've got it here. It's the No, I'm not finding it. It's the Old Shots Tavern. It's soon to be the Okun Hog.
Okun Hog, Chad Gaiman's place.
It's, yeah.
Chad Gaiman's the applicant.
And, and so we, we partially funded that. We went back to, with some guidance to the other remaining request, and then we'll also be entertaining some additional requests to, to look at then taking the remaining seventy-five hundred dollars and granting that as well. And that'll probably happen, we don't have, I don't think we've set an exact time, but I would guess we're looking at May, sometime in May for that.
Good. Any questions for Mark?
Oh, I've, we also, we appointed a new committee chair for the Facade Grant Committee. It's Jane Popinski.
Okay.
She'll be, she has replaced me.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. City Administrator Report.
I'll just share real quick. Alderman Sparts referred to Plan Commission Meeting and some, maybe a light meeting, and then future developments. There are a lot of developments that are going on. Appreciate the kind words and the plaque. I'm still here for the next three weeks, which is my last council meeting. We'll be working heavily on those developments and working with Interim Chief Derring and John Fellows and Ian and the mayor and others that need to be involved, but certainly transitioning where we are at in all of those projects and upcoming developments. And prospective TID eighteen, I think that's important to maybe chat about real quick, too, the Culshaw Farm, the hundred acres of land that is in the process of becoming annexed and rezoned into the City of West Bend for industrial. It's been earmarked for industrial for a long time. That development's gonna be really important for the future of the city, and the developers are already marketing that property and have, I'll say, significant interest in the land. So there's been some, some pre-proposals on those, on that property already, some interest in actually purchasing land, and they haven't even closed on it yet. So really exciting things coming up for the city for, for development, and know that your team will be properly prepared moving forward. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. Any alderperson reports? Zingshaim, Schmidt, Sparts? Sparts, go ahead.
I was, received a letter from the Parks Department and notified the Wingate Section of the City that the Wingate Park Volunteer Organizational Meeting will be on April sixteenth, and I think the people over there in East Side are gonna be really excited, because the park is gonna get updated. So it's on Capitol Projects we approved tonight, and it's been, I've received several calls about it, and last fall, there was a, we calmed the waters a little bit, because we had to wait to see, make sure it went through the budget, and I thank you, everybody, for supporting it, and look forward to seeing what we do in August.
Good. Good. Alderwoman Sizer? Alderwoman Butchlick?
Yep, just a reminder again, there's been new location for District One. It is going to be at the Bath House for elections on April first. So don't, I'm seeing mailings have been out, and thank you very much, but just again, a reminder, Meadowbrook Manor is not the one, it'll be the Bath House, Regner Park Bath House.
Alderwoman Allen?
Yeah, not to be outdone, District Eight is also going to be voting in a new poll location. This is at the Stockhausen Center in, it's the old Pick and Save North. So, sort of across the parking lot from the Garden Center, Steins. So, can't miss it. They also get one, this is your, you get about four hours and seven minutes to drink green beer. Happy Saint Patrick's Day. And like, that's it.
Very good. Anyone else? Library meets, Library Board meets tomorrow night, and then on Wednesday night, the West Bend Chamber of Commerce hosts a candidate forum that begins right here at five-thirty. School Board Election, District Two Alderman, and I don't know if there's anybody else in that.
No. District Two Alderman, followed by School Board.
Followed by School Board, okay? So that'll be right here at five-thirty. And then our next meeting is on April seventh. Plan Commission moved from Tuesday night to Wednesday night, so that's on April second. In-person voting starts tomorrow. As you can see, the voting booths are set up, and so best of luck, clerk, and as people start voting tomorrow. That's really all I have. Are there any other questions, comments? Alderwoman Allen?
Yep, just a reminder to everybody, April first is, Tuesday, April first, is the election, the spring election, so. Don't forget to vote if you haven't voted.
You can vote as early as tomorrow if you'd like, so. All right, no more business before the Common Council. I adjourn.